I'll call the Town of Planning, North, Town of Planning Board, Northwood.[34.22][34.22](laughter) Town of Northwood Planning Board Meeting, December 13th, 2018, to order at 7:10. Present: Select Persons Rep. Beth Boudreau, Justin Mikulski, Vice Chair Lee Baldwin, Chair Bob Strobel, Susan Austin, Linda Smith, and Jen Siz as Town Staff. And Planners Representative, that work?
It works.
Okay. We have minutes of December, whoop, November 29th to go over. And I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
So is Lee.[79.18][79.18](laughter)
I can't, I can't make my own motions. Okay. Motion to, and second, do we have a second?
Yes, just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
See, you can't hear me.
I can't hear you. Discussion on the minutes. I have to admit, when I first saw this, I thought, holy crap, that meeting wasn't that long. For 12 pages, then I'm like, oh, it's all the text of the zoning minutes, so.
Yeah. I started doing that math, I think is what it is.
It definitely is. That was not, don't take that in any way, shape, or form as a complaint. It just means that it was, it was like, oh, we've seen this before. And I know it's electronic copies.
That was easy.
Okay. Was easy. Questions, comments on minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining?
I abstain. I wasn't here, so.
Okay. Okay. Minutes are approved, 3:01. We have, oh, case 1820. It's been a long time coming.
Exactly a year.
Wasn't it December when they were here last time?
For the second time.
The second.
Yep.
Yeah, but it was.
When the first came.
Yeah.
Three years ago now.
That was a good, good, was it three years?
Well, oh, yeah, the first, the very first time.
The very first time, the very concept.
Three or four years ago anyway, maybe five.
When they came again, it was one thing. Memories. I feel like they came twice with that concept.
Double late play.
Yeah, I think they, doesn't matter.
Okay. Hey. I'd be sorry if somebody gives me a math.
So 16 lots.
Oh, no. That's not it. Oh, no. Yeah.
Wow. When was the last time we had a site plan or the stormwater management plan handed with us to the application?
The what?
When was the last time we had a stormwater management plan handed in with the application?
They did it for, or the, well, I feel like.
I don't think anybody's done that.
God, this is, why? Usually it's.
They did a lot of stuff with the ZPA application.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of extras.
Well.
Is that on the whole project, or just on what they needed to do for the zoning board?
Well, that's the one that they, we're about to do it to access, doesn't access chief nothing else.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it is for the whole of it.
Mm-hmm. Where is this?
This is.
Across from the dentist's down there.
Yep. Across from the dentist. Those are from a while ago, isn't it?
Yeah, they were here a year ago.
Yep.
This is different. This one has, this one only has 16 lots.
The biggest item, my perspective, is the waiver request. The deal was.
One in specific, or one waiver in specific, or the?
Uh, the thousand feet, single access point.
Seriously? You requested that?
Yes. A majority of the lots are beyond that point.
Wow.
Did they, he said, there were, or are there any?
There were none submitted, but there are some that are required.
Okay.
Based upon the way the application was submitted.
Right. It would be. It's a horrible place to have cars dumping out.
That's interesting, because on page 2-6 of the checklist, 302B6, no point along the road shall be more than 1,000 point from a thousand feet for the single point of access, is checked as provided.
Right. It's how their view of that. They believe that.
Okay.
I think that's their understanding, is they're saying, thinking that because of the large cul-de-sac?
Yeah. So that within, within their, in their own little universe of the subdivision, that single access point is where?
At the very start of the cul-de-sac, but one thing we just want to be careful of is not to get into too much detail. Our staff is more than glad to explain some questions if you have them, but the details can be brought out at the public hearing.
Right.
I think James did a very thorough job of identifying the fact that he doesn't agree with that.
Okay. That's why I was just, I saw the check and I was like that.
Correct. Yeah, that is something that the board will need to address at the public hearing.
Yep. Okay. And aside from that, the other waivers that are waiting, or required that are coming or requested?
So based upon the project design as submitted or as proposed, there are two separate provisions that would require waiver requests to be allowed. Otherwise, they've got two violations.
Okay.
Based upon staff review.
And those are?
So without those two waiver requests, the application is incomplete.
Okay. That's where I was going from.
At this time.
And those are the pending ones, or, okay, just double checking.
The ones identified on page two.
Yeah, the staff report.
Right. No, I haven't gotten to the staff report.
1A and 1B.
Yep, yep.
Right. Yeah.
The cynic in me is saying, no offense to Jen, and take this with a non-serious point, if we found it incomplete, that could give James a chance to get to take a look at it again.[554.75][554.75](laughter) I don't, I don't think, let's say.
We're good, we're good. There's plenty of time.[560.12][560.12](laughter) Just on the items that you noted as pending on the checklist, those are not, it's not the waiver request is pending, it is those items have their, both their permits that they've requested, state and federal permits that they've requested, and that those are pending.
Yep. Thanks. I have complete, full faith in you, it's not a question that I would just, we've known this has been in process for a while and it happened to us.
Mine must.
Well, yes. That was good, that was good. You're awake. I can't say the same for me, but as far as the subdivision hitting.
Yes, okay. We're good, I'm sorry. I thought you meant about the absence.
Well, no, I knew the absence.
I want to come back to.
Whatever. Okay. Okay. So we'll let the applicant know that those?
Yes, Jen is going to contact.
Okay, just.
Both applicants for the staff reviews.
Sure. I always hate to, wow, I shouldn't say hate. I like to make sure that the applicant is aware that they're missing stuff while they still have a chance to get it, so that we're not finding it incomplete, or holding on an application, especially one of this, because I know this has generated some interest.
Mm-hmm.
Questions on generals for this application?
If anybody would like to take a plan set home, you're welcome to.
Okay.
And review it, as long as you bring them back for the meeting.
Sure.
But it's a pretty good-sized project for Northwood, so you may want to roll one up and take one.
You still have a public copy, separate from those three?
And I'd prefer that the colored copies stay here.
Now, that used to be a problem, for sure.
Sorry, what?
Well, she was just making sure we had plenty of copies.
Okay, yeah. And I just ask that the color copies stay here, so that people can.
See the color copy.
See the color, or they put them in the town hall if they need to. How often do we get color copies of full-size prints?
Not too often.
Often.
Not with that size either.
Can I have one of those? With the ZPA.
Gary will kill me.
On the record, there's more up there. I know Hal likes to have these papers.
Okay, so.
If you'd just like to get one, we'll make sure everybody has one on the way out.
Yeah.
So procedurally wise, if, and I'm looking, tell me if I'm getting too close to contact. That's why I'm trying to think of it as procedures without getting into specifics.
Oh, sure.
If we have a subdivision application without, with lots that are landlocked, no driveways, no proposed access, is that, does that meet, I guess, well?
Would that bump it into being incomplete? I would say no. It's a curve cut.
No, no, it wasn't a question of incompleteness, it was more along the lines of.
Design.
Pardon me?
Design.
Design-wise, exactly.
I think as, as a planning board, part of your obligation in reviewing subdivision is to make sure that you're creating buildable lots in your community.
Okay.
That's kind of your due diligence that you have to do to the community and future property owners. So if a lot is not a viable lot, you have to use your regulations, you have to use your ordinance to determine what that is. If it is not buildable under your regulations, and you have the opportunity to say to the applicant, I don't think this is buildable, can you demonstrate that it is?
Okay.
And so one of the things they might do is they might show you a potential lot layout. And so they might show, okay, well, we would put a driveway here, a house here, and you can add that would not be something that would be recorded, however.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a good procedural question.
What are these?
What are what? The dashed?
Yeah.
This, this one is, where are?
I think those are steep slopes.
I might also point out, in the staff report, there are a couple different things mentioned where the board should think about whether or not you want third-party review of various elements that were submitted. That's not something to discuss or decide tonight, but as you look through the materials and prepare for the hearing, those are some things that you will want to look at.
Specifics would be stormwater traffic.
Stormwater traffic.
Just making sure it wasn't beyond that. One thing I would appreciate having, because I think it's even prior to my time on the board, not often I can say that, is maybe the legal history of our 1,000-foot ordinance, when it was first proposed, and when we adopted it, and whether it's been challenged, or.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Okay, I figured you could, because you have more years than I do. The outcome of that, and how many times applicants have bumped up into it, and where it's come into. I mean, even if it's, I, the ultimate goal of that question is not to get into the nitty-gritty of pulling all the applications where it is.
There's only one, so.
Okay.
And there was a reason for it, and I can get that information for the board.
But I think that would be good to have, so that we're, we know the history of it, so we can interpret. As individuals, we want to see how much has been done in the past. are missing, for as long as, as long as this has been cooking. Let's leave it at that, but that's okay. That's why there's a review.
Did the fire department and police department get a copy, Susan?
Yes.
Of their forms?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Is it submitted?
Well.
Question?
Yeah, good.
On the first page of the layout.
Mm-hmm.
Lots.
The cover page?
Yeah. The upper left corner. Yeah. Where's the access?
Uh.
Is that in there?
No.
Is it? No.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I, maybe I pissed something.
Is that around here?
That's, uh.
Can they come from the other road?
We're getting into item two.
We're getting into plan review, which shouldn't be happening at this time.
It shouldn't be.
So the best thing to do is.
If it says driveways, it says, they're arguing for 11 and 12.
Okay.
If I might recommend, just so that, can we keep yourselves above board in the procedure for application review? I think right now, it's okay for you to look at the plans, make notes to yourself on potential questions you might have, but do not ask them at this time, tonight. And bring those, bring those questions with you to the hearing.
Okay.
So, start that. Who's that?
I don't know. I'd have to look at a legend. It should show.
I wish we had a legend.
Should be on the existing conditions page.
That's this one, I think?
The legend on page two.
But the legend doesn't have all the blind codes.
No.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Everything I want to know what it is, isn't on the legend.
So that's something to make a note of and bring up at the hearing.
Okay. So, without going into specifics that are on the site, in the sheets, anything else you want to talk about in general from the 10,000-foot view of this application? Anything that you would like to have the applicant provide for in December 27th?
I wonder what this stuff is.
Well, that's, I'd say if you can't figure it out by then, that's a very good question to have. Pardon me?
Yeah, but it doesn't say.
This page, the big, big page of legend?
Yeah.
Oh, at the very end? Page? Okay.
Sheet G1, that makes.
Yeah, there's, yeah, page number, okay. You probably haven't gotten back that far. All the more reason to take these home.
Ah.
I'm trying to think, when was the last time we had a subdivision of significant size, or a major subdivision?
Well, I think we've, we had one up on winding hill, but that was all frontage lots, not new road. Hender would be the only one.
Okay, so it's been at least 10 years?
Been a while.
Before my time.
And the final, the second phase of it still hasn't been accepted, the road hasn't been accepted yet. This spring.
Definitely worth brushing up on the subdivision regulations. They're quite different than site plan.
So procedurally, something you might want to think about is that if you need more time to digest what is in the plan set, what a lot of communities will do on the first night of the hearing is only go through the completeness review, and do the determination of completeness, and then continue to a date and time certain, to then start discussing the merits of the application. As you go through that completeness review, you might identify some kind of housekeeping or corrections that might be warranted, or other simple edits, that then the applicant would have time to address before you start digging into the merits of the application. So, you know, you can use that completeness review as a time to sit there and take these questions that you have, and go through them with the applicant, have that face-to-face time to talk about, are there some, some things that need to be improved really, before you can roll up your sleeves and do a good job of reviewing their application? Or even just give them a jumpstart on things that they might need to fix during that process.
So, just, again, procedural question on that.
Yep.
We would open the hearing for completeness and just spend the, could spend the entire night talking about that, without deciding, without actually opening the case till we find it complete.
Correct.
Correct?
Right, because, I mean, you have to, procedurally, you have to do completeness before you then proceed into, into the merits.
Sure.
So, right. And if you have members of the public, you could, you could open it up for public comment and let folks, you know, who are here have that opportunity to share their thoughts and comments. I would recommend, though, if you do that, allow the applicant to initially, you know, do their initial presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then say, okay, we're going to continue. There are some things that we would like you, the applicant, to provide to us. They are, and articulate them, and then say, now, we're going to continue, and we'll, you know, pick this back up once these items have been addressed. Just so, just so you know, it doesn't all have to be squared away on night one.
Yeah, okay. We usually, I usually have about, my tolerance is about 85%. If the majority of it is there, but like, for instance, we know that the stormwater is, they're working on it.
Exactly.
It's out here for tonight, that's okay. Interesting way to think about it.
And this board typically does let, at the least, let the abutters have an opportunity.
Yeah.
That way, it's helpful, not, because they're chomping at the bit out there to want to be able to say things.
Most definitely.
And it's helpful to the applicant to hear as well.
Most definitely.
So we usually do that if time allows.
Yeah. Just, again, thinking about it procedurally wise, since you brought it up, and I appreciate the thought of it, the public comments would not be on the open application if we haven't completed, accepted it as complete, but they'd still be on the record with the case.
Correct. Well, you, you need to go through completeness.
First.
Yeah, well, you need to go through completeness first, and you need to get through completeness on the 27th, when the hearing is scheduled, because you've got 30 days from when an application comes in to determine whether it's complete or not.
Sure, okay. Okay. That's why I was confused.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to the board?
Yep.
So if there are details that you want to see, come prepared.
I know, I'm just thinking at least.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Because I'd like to get home by 8 o'clock, if I can. Uh, zoning amendments.
I'll just say very quickly that you have in front of you the first four amendments you have basically approved to recommend, and number five, you've discussed, but there's been some language changes that you need to take a look at. I think James was.
Um, and if you have members of the public, you could, you could open it up for public comment and let folks, you know, who are here have that opportunity to share their, their thoughts and comments. Um, I would recommend, though, if you do that, allow the applicant to initially, you know, do their initial presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then say, okay, we're going to continue. Um, there are some things that we would like you, the applicant, to provide to us. Uh, they are, and articulate them, and then say, now we're going to continue and we'll contin, you know, pick this back up once these items have been addressed. Just so, just so you know, it, it doesn't all have to be...
Yeah.
Squared away on night one.
Yeah, okay. We usually, I usually have about, my tolerance is about 85%. If the majority of it is there, but like, for instance, we know that the stormwater is, they're working on it.
Right.
It's out here for tonight, that's okay. Interesting way to think about it.
And this board typically does let, at, at the least, let the abutters have an opportunity. That way it's helpful, not, not, because they're chomping at the bit out there to want to be able to say things.
Most definitely.
And it's helpful to the applicant to hear as well.
Yep.
So, we usually do that if time allows.
Yeah. Just, again, thinking about it procedural-wise, since you brought it up, and I appreciate the, the thought of it, the public comments would not be on the open application if we haven't completed, accepted it as complete, but they'd still be on the record with the case.
Correct. Well, you, you need to go through completeness.
First.
Yeah, well, you need to go through completeness first, um, and you need to get through completeness on the 27th, when the hearing is scheduled, because you've got 30 days from when an application comes in to determine whether it's complete or not.
Sure, okay. Okay. That's why I was confused.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to the board? So, if there are details that you want to see, come prepared.
I know, I'm just thinking at least.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Because I'd like to get home by eight o'clock if I can. Uh, zoning amendments.
I'll just say very quickly that, um, you have in front of you the first four amendments you have basically approved to recommend. And number five, you've discussed, but there's been some language changes that you need to take a look at. Uh, I think James went back and changed the language to keep it as a special exception as requested by the board.
Right.
And then Jen and James have been working on the seasonal dwelling. And that's in there, and I would ask that you direct any questions on those last two, if you have them at this point, to Jen, and then after the questions are done, if everybody's comfortable, we would go to a vote to recommend that they be, uh, go to a public hearing for placement on the ballot. And then we need to talk about dates.
So, just to double check, and again, more plan advocate in case I get asked questions on amendment five, the steep slopes, uh, looking at Roman 6E7A and B, actually A. Essentially, we're not allowing anything except, or any road structure or driveway on land or 25% or greater, what would be allowed in a case like that. I think that covers, if it's not a road, if it's not a structure, because structure covers almost everything or driveway, there isn't much left. Which is fine, I'm not saying that as criticism anyway, I think that's exactly the intent.
I think that's close to what we had before, I think it's, and, and I think that's what was being enforced. I just think the concern that James raised was relative to clarifications on structures and driveways.
Right, right. But in theory, we could have a power line easement.
Well, then it's always open for someone to come in and ask for a variance based on a particular set of circumstances.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, at which time they could explain why they couldn't avoid the steep slopes in order to do what they're doing.
Right. Jen, you might be able to help. You might be able to help on this one. I've brought up, being an engineer, or a non-licensed engineer, can I claim, claim it that way? When we're talking steep sloped area of 2,000 square feet for minimum threshold or how, whatever, as you're defining it. I've, and I don't know if James and I came to that agreement or not, but if, if here's my steep slope, or my sloped area, is the threshold defined this way?
Uh, we've got to stop for a minute. Uh, Justin's out of the room.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could just hold for a minute, thank you.
Could you switch your backup? I can't see what you're doing.
I'm using this as my steep slope.
Okay, all right.
As a demonstration.
All right, okay. I, I heard that, I had no idea.
We need some alternates too. We have no alternates on at this time.
Time to do some recruiting.
Hmm?
Time to do some recruiting.
Like the way Justin ended up.
Well...
Just people voted for him. Maybe we'll have to...
We have a real serious problem with our zoning board, we only have four regular members.
That's hard. Is that a problem?
We've been, we've been trying...
You guys are elected there?
We've been trying to recruit zoning board for a long time.
Yeah. Do a town message board?
Yeah.
With the changeable type message board out on the street.
Oh, no, we don't, that's a good idea.
Because I know...
I think I voted, I think I proposed it because I knew...
The town that I was working with, uh, prior to when we were the straffer, kind of had similar shortage of members, put a sign out there, out in front of town hall, planning, planning board members wanted, and they had three applicants.
Well, maybe we should do that. I'll bring that up to the board of selectmen.
Bring that up to Co. Brown.
Get the traffic out there.
Oh, no.
They're the rec board.
That's a good idea. We could put, as long as we put zoning board members first, because we, we don't even have a full board for that.
Really?
Yeah. So, we're all set.
Okay.
Can I do both?
So, the question comes in, I'm also a G, was a GIES keeper. If here's my 2,000 square foot.
Yep.
If I...
It says viewed as in plan view.
Okay, it does say, thank you.
So, just be looking straight down on it.
Perfect, okay. That answered?
Think of it this way, CAD has done, most, most of your plan drawings are 2D drawings, and when they draw that polygon in, in the CAD software, it is a 2D polygon.
Correct.
It's going to give you that flat. Flattened up.
Do we say that somewhere?
I don't think you need to.
Okay, that's fine, I just more wanted the professional's opinion as to how we define that, because, you know, the steeper the slope, the less the area, if you're doing it in plan view, but, or the converse, it's the opposite way, the bigger. So, the steeper the slope, the less impact, less time. So, the issue comes in, to use my demonstration, this is actually a pretty good one. We measure the area of the 2,000 square feet as plan view, so if...
To be the underside.
Right. If here's my slope, that's how much it is. That's our threshold.
Because that's the...
This side, so this has to be, the flat side now, has to be 2,000 square feet. The steeper the slope, the bigger the area, the less, the smaller faces are going to be excluded from our threshold for steep slope area. That make sense? I just, I'm...
However, also keep in mind, though, this is capped at 25% for your slope, so you're not going to get, you know, you're not going to get the 90.
Good, true, thank you.
So, it's... No cliffs of Dover.
Yeah.
You're not going to get the cliffs, yeah.
Well, thinking of the application we have in front of us, where that was one of the things he wanted to do, so, okay.
Is a cliff up there?
Not a public meeting.
I'm gonna have to look at the plan again.
Okay. Good point, thank you.
One thing I wondered about, is this not corrected because it was, this was the only, the most current copy I had.
Oh. You're right, that, you missed that. It should be, uh, so section 6E5, it should read applications for a special exception permit. Laura missed it too. So, I would just note that with that, making that amendment, if you are voting tonight to send this to town, to, to a public hearing in preparation for town meeting, that when you make that motion, you will want to specify that that particular element is amended.
Okay. Is non-technical or non-structural or whatever you want to call it, non-technical direction on the ballot language? Just, uh, I guess the third line down, materials for granting a special exception and makes administrative changes to the overlay regarding the purpose, authority, and cost statements? Just, uh...
Could you say that again, Bob? I missed that.
Just inserting the word "the" in the line, the third line of the ballot, to the overlay on the bottom there.
And that's not subject to voting at this time, so... You're ahead of the game with having your draft warrant article language right now.
Oh, that's for sure.
That's what I was hoping for.
Yeah, I was really, really pleased that we had that. He said he was going to try.
Yeah.
But that's just fantastic.
Any other items on, well, I guess, let's talk about warrant, or amendment five. Did we already move for one through four, correct, to the ballot?
Correct.
So, for amendment five, we've got two changes in, one, change in ballot language, which is minor, very minor, and then the change in, uh, Roman 6E5, just from conditional use to special exception. Anything else people have questions on? Or want to discuss? From my recollection, the, what was, we discussed the last time is that, uh, we had proposed this as a conditional use permit, and we were decided to swap it back to a special exception, so the, the technical language, defining what we're doing, why, all that fun stuff, is, I think, almost identical, it was just we swapped the words special exception, or conditional use for special exception. So, otherwise, there, there are no significant changes that I could see. I would entertain a motion to put this on the ballot as amended, if somebody wanted to propose that.
We'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
She's staring at me, I seconded it. Why talk to her on Tuesdays?
It would be so much easier if the chair could make his own motions, but that's okay. That's why we don't.
Well, there's nothing to stop you from making a motion.
No, no, okay.
No, he just enjoys her being classed.
Nope, I like, I like to make sure that people are paying attention and consensus. Okay, so motion to move amendment five as amended to the ballot, and motion by Mr. Michael Justin, and second by Ms. Baldwin. That's what happens when I forget to do that soon. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining, okay. So, five is on the ballot as amended. Good catch on the language, thank you. I didn't catch that either. Amendment six.
What's the chapter, lady?
Yep. Roman 7D2 applicability? Just, uh...
Yes.
Second sentence, the burden shall be on the property owner to establish the season or periods of the year of the dwelling of use or, or not so much use, but I, I understand the intent.
Right.
More trying to...
Sound like there's missing a word.
Maybe if you take the V out? Period of year of dwelling?
Season or periods of the year.
Occupancy? Or just of occupancy?
Of the occupancy, it says dwelling.
Yeah, okay.
About of occupancy.
What was that?
I think just of, the season or periods of the year of occupancy.
Yeah.
I will say, the language on this is lovely. Even with putting my planning board hat on, reading it was nice. There weren't a lot, there was not a lot of legalese, the purpose was very nicely handled because a lot of times, that's what residents get to, and that's the first thing they see, and if it tends into legalese, that's like, they stop.
There's a, there's a whole kind of mishmash of, of authors and, uh, existing audiences or existing ordinances that were compiled, so James had everything through purpose written, and then was going to complete this on Monday, that didn't happen. Um, however, we were pulling from and looking at Epsom, Freedom, and, um, Wakefield, because Wakefield just proposed something as well, and James was helping them with, with a little language tweak there, so we had a few different things, so, yeah, so there's a lot of credit due to other people.
Please convey that, our appreciation.
The, um, applicability, it should be sections VIID3 and VIID4, shouldn't it?
Last page.
Oh.
Yep?
Yes, thank you.
Seven.
That's, and that's my type, right?
On the last, uh, line of, uh, applicability, the Roman five should be Roman seven.
Correct, thank you. I will note, this has been sent to council for review, but I don't, Linda, I don't know if at the 11th hour you had heard back from the...
I have not.
Okay.
But I would definitely suggest that the motion include with review by council for any legal language changes that you would suggest.
As far as land use language, what is, how is discharged defined? Until abandoned or discharged?
Oh, um...
The third line of applicability.
Yep.
We could certainly pull something, I'm trying to think of...
I mean, an example would be fine, I've just, it's not a word I have come across often in terms of land use.
I know.
And again, I'm...
What number is that in, Bob?
One, it's on the last page on, uh, Roman 7D2 applicability, the third line.
Oh. I just read through it and missed it.
Essentially, they're being allowed to be used for the same temporal extent as they had on a continued, on a rimped basis until abandoned or discharged, and I just was curious about discharged.
I'm going to just simply say that's lifted directly from both Epsom and... I'm gonna just simply say that's lifted directly from both Epsom and Freedom, they have identical language. So, it looks like one of them had it drafted first, and the other refined it or modified it for their own community.
I, I would, I surmise, it would be something that the use changed, or was requested a change on the application. You know, abandon, obviously, that's, that's, that has a legal definition, but, you know, if I'm taking action as an owner, an applicant of changing something...
With discharge also, you think of discharging something, letting it go?
Yeah.
Where abandon is more, you know, conscious effort to not have a use?
Mm-hmm.
Where discharge might mean it just simply...
Then released.
The relatives never came and took care of it?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Like it fell apart? Like we have some structures that are just, the roof's a cave-in or something?
There's some up by Lucas Pond, isn't there? At least one.
That was discharged?
Yeah. Well, it looks like it was falling apart.
Looks are different.
Well, it hasn't had anybody there in years, and it's kind of...
Well, I think that discharging something is letting it go.
Discharging a owner.
Okay. Just more, more curious than anything else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me think of the definition.
Leave that one to the lawyers.
Yep, that's fine. Yep, I'm not, don't think I'm complaining about the language, it's more just asking for clarification.
This is the purpose of this, is to go through and...
Right. I figure if it's...
I'm not offended.
Well, if it's had legal review from Epsom and Freedom, as an example, the language is, is, I would assume is fairly good. Okay.
Well, it's on their ordinance, that doesn't guarantee that they did have legal review.
I know Freedoms did. I talked to the planning board chairman at Freedom.
Okay.
And, this is probably splitting hairs. That's not the intent, it's just more, again, clarification. The difference between, well, I understand pre-existing would mean that it was on-site before the ordinance was changed.
Correct.
What's the difference between pre-existing and existing?
Honestly, you could probably just remove the word of, you could probably remove "pre-existing." I mean, the...
Pre-existing makes more sense.
Yeah.
From a, from a explanation point of view, but I would just, more, I'm also a language geek, so I'm just more curious about anything else.
Well, I'll tell you something I heard at a law lecture years ago, that the way to always remember what the term grandfather means, lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah.
And that was like...
Yeah.
Sure.
So, I memorized that, lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming.
Sure. I figured, I mean, I see it all the time.
Right.
As a use, and I'm, or as in new legal use, I'm just, was, it's like...
It's the term.
Sort of, it's a term, but it's fine. It was more...
I, I would say, and part of the reason this is structured the way that it is, is that currently seasonal dwellings are a conforming use. They might however be on a non-conforming lot.
Correct.
So, we cannot say that it is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. So, that's part of why this is structured the way it is, and where there were some deviations from the way that Epsom and Freedom were structured, as a result.
There is a bag of cough drops.
Uh, yes.
Back to somebody for a year.
Yep.
That's smart. Do you keep cough drops on the table for all board meetings? That's smart.
Because the people who do a lot of talking...
We actually had boxes of tissues, we had, for Budget Committee.
I always...
We had, had one on the man tissues, the patriots' boxes. So, nobody was offended, because...
I don't know what it is that's going around, but holy moly.
Yeah.
It took me down for a week.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I would not be...
We used to have a little container that had extra cans, and...
And I would not, well, I only took one day off work, but I should have taken two.
And we had somebody here that didn't like it, was clutter on the table, so they did away with it.
And it hit them.
A lot of times, people say, oh, I need it.
Everybody upstairs had it, and everybody got hit differently. Somebody lost their voice, you know, I just had, had the head cold, yeah.
Cold water.
Other people were coughing. Now, if I was not, if I was contagious, I would be calling in.
You have to have a physical form present. You have to have a physical form present.
Ah, well.
Are you around, are you around the students a lot, or mostly, you're probably in your own space, or...
They're not students, they're germ, germ bags.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it high school, or what grade?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade. What school?
Auburn.
Oh, Auburn, yeah.
All the different communities are late.
Yep.
In their new building?
It's under construction now.
Isn't, how long has that been, how long has that been making? It's been forever, hasn't it?
The water usually helps, it's so dry in here.
My date was worn off.
I think this is the third attempt.
The third attempt?
Third attempt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost there.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah, I'm almost done.
Yep. Just something I pointed, Justin, we're here for it, and the other two were not involved in the conversation, but listening, just looking at the seven D four section, the last sentence, as long as any dwellings are eliminated. I know Linda mentioned that there's only, she's aware of only one other, one lot that that would have, that would apply to in town, where there's multiple camps on one lot. I was thinking there was more, that might not be that much of an issue. And, when does the voter guide go out? After the deliberative session?
Before.
Before, okay. So, the, probably early February or early January?
Well, it's early February, we're having deliberative, it's, uh...
January then.
The second of February, so probably the third week in January.
Okay. Just thinking, we might, I'll try to have, yeah, some language to explain a little bit more.
Well, his staff comments, and then...
Staff comments are...
You could expand on it a little more, if you wanted, the board wanted to.
Well, let's, let's, do we have any more discussion on six?
Looks good.
Okay. You wanna make a motion to, uh...
Accept?
Accept with the corrections?
Well...
Recommend for...
Recommend to go to the ballot with amendments.
And you need by counsel.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
With review and necessary changes for legal purposes.
So, the edits that I have, or the amendments that I have, is that seven D two applicability, changing the dwelling to occupancy, and then same paragraph correcting Roman five to be Roman seven in those two instances.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Second.
Apparently, I made the motion.
Yes, you did.
Sorry, I interrupted.
Okay. It was, you did fine, it's, when applications, I like to make sure that they're clear. They're clear, I, we understood what it was, in this case, I don't think it's that big of a deal. Okay, motion by Ms. Baldwin, sorry.
You have to get it on at least once a morning.
I do, I do. And, second by Justin. To all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining, okay. So, six is on the ballot as amended, pending legal, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that the board vote tonight on the other four, just for the sake of clarity, so there's no issues. I was here, and what the board voted on the first four was to recommend them. If you could just confirm that vote with a recommendation that they will go to the public hearing to be placed on the ballot. There aren't any changes to those.
Right. Do we need, can we do it as one?
Yes, please.
Or four?
Motion to have amendments one through four added to the ballot.
Second?
And reviewed?
And reviewed.
They've been reviewed.
They've been reviewed, counsel.
Okay.
Added to the ballot.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, same people, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining, okay. Okay, so that puts one through six on the ballot unless there's legal challenges to six, which be surprised at, but so be it.
So, we need to clarify the date.
Yes.
We sent an email to you and James for the seventh, and I know that's an off night for planning board, it's a Monday night, but the Budget Committee had already scheduled the third, and they have to hold the public hearing on the tenth because of the, the time restraints between the last day to receive petition Warren articles, and they don't want to meet on the weekend, so they had already booked into the tenth for this room. And we definitely want to have this room, even if we only have a couple, it's better to have it recorded and in this room.
We need to have a quorum, correct?
And we need to have a quorum for that.
Please.
Double check.
So, we need to confirm that, I think we did, via email that...
Oh, yeah, we did with, yeah, James, but... Yeah.
No, I mean, we need to confirm that we can have a quorum of planning board members here on the seventh.
Yes, yes.
I think we did, that somebody would be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, James would be here.
Monday, the seventh?
I probably can't do Monday.
Okay.
Seventh of...
January.
Oh, I'm out of town that week.
Oh, boy.
Ooh.
What were the alternate dates? I don't even know somewhere.
Well, the alternative is we're only gonna have one public hearing, we can't make changes after.
What about the fourth or the fifth? Those were the alternate dates that you proposed.
Saturday? Saturday? Did I do that?
What were you thinking?
Oh, what about the third?
Oh, we have a, there's...
Budget meeting here.
Budget meeting, no.
If people could come early that night, yeah, but then the budget, yeah, they don't...
Six, five or six.
Isn't the bud, what time is the budget, seven?
How long?
Budget's at seven.
Be long.
Unless there's a lot of people who want to come along.
The problem is, is that would be work session for anything.
That would be the second Monday, right?
No, it'd be the first.
First Thursday, January third.
No, no, I'm talking about...
The seventh?
Seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the first Monday.
If we did it early on the third, at like five or six, at five thirty.
Five thirty.
Because I don't remember the public hearings being very long.
No.
Well, you never know, that's the problem.
Right.
Typically, we don't get, I think we've had as many as one show up. I don't, we don't usually have too many.
I would say, just where amendment six hasn't had legal review yet, you want to keep your options open to have a second hearing.
Yes.
In case you need to make changes.
Yes.
Uh, I'm okay with January third, but I can't speak for anybody else.
At what, like five?
At like five thirty?
Five, five thirty?
I'd go five thirty, only because we, a public hearing should...
Allow members of the public to get...
Allow people to be able to get here, if the members of the public do want to come.
Can't do it like noon?
You can, but you might get a...
Friday night or midnight? No.
January third?
I don't think we want that public here.
That's true, too.
Friday night or midnight, no.
How, how's everybody doing for that night?
I have a meeting that night, I have a school board meeting.
I think I'm fine.
At what time, though?
Five forty-five.
Oh.
You got five minutes.
Oh, goodness. Do the selectmen have an alternate for the ex officio seat? So, the selectmen could...
No, they won't do that.
No? I was gonna say, you know, and sometimes, well, in a, in a pinch, if you've got a selectmen's meeting between now and then, they could appoint someone to be the alternate.
Oh, Scott might, Scott might come.
Ex officio.
If, if it's...
Is the budget for the school?
Scott would be here that night anyway.
Is the budget for the school or the town?
Hmm?
Is the budget, the school or the town budget?
It's work session.
It's town and school. Yeah, Scott would be here at seven, so maybe we could get him to come at five thirty.
Especially if we know...
Yeah, you can replace the selectman.
Yeah.
With another selectman, sure.
Yeah.
Do we want to do that?
Justin's gonna be out of town.
On the third?
On the third?
We're good on the third.
Oh, you're good on the third, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Seventh, I'm out.
Okay.
Seventh through the eleventh.
I'm always around. Except in the summer.
So, it just leaves Hal?
Hal generally will be...
He has to continue that meeting at seven?
Yeah, Hal will be here.
And Joe.
And Joe, they comes as a, yeah, that works out.
So, Thursday, January third, except five thirty.
Okay. Ooh. How's that gonna work? Can I get my notice in by then? Yeah, it must be.
Oh, yeah. If you do it...
And it pretty much consists of reading the language changes and making any public comments.
Ten days.
Ten days?
Three weeks from June.
No cases.
Well, the problem is, is that we do it in a weekly...
It would be a, this would be a separate meeting.
Oh, okay.
Beyond the work session, just to go to the ballot.
Okay. It'd come out when? The weekly?
We don't want it to come out on the second.
Okay. Here's today.
No, it wouldn't work.
If you...
Hold on.
If you, if we do it tomorrow, it'll come out on the nineteenth. And that's enough time.
The problem is, is we have to have whatever Laura's gonna provide by the date of next Wednesday.
No, you cannot make any, you can't cha, from what the board has looked at tonight, you cannot change it for what will be at the hearing on the third. So, what you had is what's at the hearing. You can't change this draft, even though Laura sends comments, you can't actually make her changes until the third.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying she's gonna send comments.
Oh.
If she makes a correctional language change...
You can't make it until the third anyways.
Yeah.
And that's why you have to have the second hearing.
Right.
So, at the me, at the hearing on the, so if, at this point...
We've always done it, subject to legal, whatever.
Sorry.
There was the third, the earliest we could do it? We can't just do it the twenty-seventh, we regularly meet?
No, because we don't, it's ten days.
Oh, okay.
But, that would, I gotta have a calendars, I can look at both.
If you look at... So, if, if it was here, that's not ten days, is it?
Ten business days?
No, just days.
Ten days, not including the day of the posting and the day of the meeting.
So, twelve calendar days.
So, if it came out on December nineteenth...
You're okay.
No, no, not for the twenty-seventh.
Wait, oh, she said, what have we had our public hearing? Oh, on the twenty-seventh, instead of the, oh, instead of the third, sorry. I missed the twenty-seventh piece.
Are we now, even at the third, going to have to get it out tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow.
So, it comes out on the nineteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Ooh.
Do you draft that public notice, or just James?
I'll draft it.
I'm available tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm in the office.
What I'll probably do is I'll draft it and then send it to you. How would that be?
That sounds good.
That way, we're both...
Let me see if John...
Yeah, I'd rather have another set.
I can see if John has a far heart meeting on the seventh.
Usually, we do it that way.
The problem is, I, I...
Team member.
The problem is, I, I need childcare, so if, if he doesn't have a fire department meeting on the seventh on that Monday, I'm on. Let me, I can check.
Are we on the third or are we on the twenty-seventh?
We can't do it the twenty-seventh.
We can't do the twenty-seventh, okay. That's, that's our.
Okay. Just double checking.
So, it's the third or the seventh?
Let me check with John.
Well.
My suspicion is that.
We could do the fourth or fifth if somebody wants to do it.
Let me see if Hal's available for January third.
If he is, we need to have enough people.
Yeah.
Staffing on the fifth might be more challenging. Guaranteed. Nobody wants to come here on Saturday.
Or Friday night. I just don't see.
I've been here on Saturdays.
We have our budget meetings all, the last two Saturdays have been here all day. Yeah. Well, wasn't quite as long for the school as the town, but.
So, long meetings are.
So, if I need to do the seventh, I can do that. He'll just go late.
What about the third? Are you free on the third?
She's got.
Oh, you have, you have.
What a problem we're gonna have though. No matter how we do this, the second, the second one's gonna have to go to Foster's or.
The seventh is that Monday you originally asked.
There's no way around that.
Cause what was the date we had over there?
Why, if we have everything for the next day. If we do the third.
We've had three already.
Do the third.
We'd be good.
Yeah.
I just test Hal.
Yeah. Yeah. We need to do the third.
If possible, and then if Scott's gonna be in the area here for.
He's gotta be here at seven o'clock anyway.
Yeah, we could.
Right, but he gets out, that'll have to be out of working time, but.
Did you say you had potentially four board members?
For the third?
We have three for the third.
Huh?
We have three confirmed who are available on the third.
Okay.
I asked a fourth.
And that's Betty, too. Betty.
And Betty.
We're forgetting about Betty. Okay. I mean, she's.
She's usually here.
So, you should, you've got some backups.
We have some backups.
Okay. Go with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say the third.
I'm okay with the third. I mean, that's, we got only one confirmed absence and that's certainly justified.
We've got three, three choices there that might.
So, I'm okay.
Or actually four. We have potential Scott. We have Joe, Betty, and Hal.
Right.
So, we should be able to get one out of four.
It's just twenty-five percent.
Yeah, we'll get in touch right away.
Yep.
Please don't mind if I keep sending you reminders on that, cause that's very important.
Okay, so that'll be January third, five thirty. Excuse me. I have declined to do so based on prior experience with other board members who are not here. But since all three of us, four of us here tonight have smartphones, would you prefer that I send out like a calendar invite for planning board stuff?
You can add my email address anywhere.
Okay. I can do that rather than, that way it's at least I know if you have gotten the invite if, even if you don't attend.
Calendar invites for.
Okay, I can certainly do that. Could you just make sure that, uh, we get your email address?
Yep.
It's gonna be a calendar invite.
Or actually, you just want, just put it on the bottom and I'll pass it. So, we'll do calendar invites. I think Joe is the one who didn't. Joe and Rick got me out of the habit. Does he have a phone?
I take the pens out, cause it's fine.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Which is fine. That's, for me, I'm glad he uses it. I have people who don't use it that. January third, five thirty for the first hearing. Do we wanna do a date for the second?
Well, the twenty-fourth, I think, is the only one. We're gonna do the same. The first thing on the regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, okay. Okay.
If needed.
Heard back from Hal, so that's okay though.
That would only be if you, if there's changes.
Okay. Can we move on?
By all means.
Okay, just by line of pressure. I wanna just double check that all the Ts are crossed and I's dotted. Okay.
Well, hopefully we have.
Uh, internal business. I will admit, it's the end of the year. I have not had a chance to even sit down for an hour and a half when I've had a brain cell working to finish up the CIP. It's only been. It's only been multiple weeks.
But now you have another project to add to that. End of the year?
Oh, yeah, they reported. She's already started. We already talked about it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, she's been working on the spreadsheet.
Hear that. So, yes, I know I have another little project. And I have photographs, I think.
Oh, that's wonderful. Let's do that. I like the pictures.
Yes, we have photographs. Well. Trying to think if I have any face. It was from the.
Sidewalk?
Sidewalk for the ZBA for DACA's project. No, it's not just dirt. It's people looking at plans out in the middle of the woods.
That's cool.
But I'm trying to think of.
Planning board in action.
If there are any faces and if people would recognize the faces and know that they're not planning board members.
A photo shop.
We'll clip them up.
Okay, yeah. But I have them.
Yeah, if you could send them along, that would be fabulous.
Here's one with everybody's back turned. That works. And, yep, now you got three. Two are almost identical. Just flip one direction or if it's not the other.
Oh, very nice.
That's nice. Well, it's this way? Nope.
There's only, there's two that look almost the same.
Yeah, I like the third one. I don't know about the middle one.
It's just facts.
Yeah, it is just facts, but it's, they're looking at plans.
Oh.
She's got a plan.
We have a reputation for award-winning talent courts.
All right.
We do?
We do. I can't even tell you who. Yeah, I can't tell you that. Okay. I'll send you those.
Thanks, Bill.
What else?
I don't have anything else here.
Did this letter from Mr. Hadley, is that?
That's the next.
Next time? Okay.
Yeah, you can just read that. We don't usually get a lot of stuff up front, but he.
Okay, that's fine. I saw that.
And just. Do you get folks thinking ahead, uh, filing for people that are?
Yes, who's up?
Whose terms are expiring?
This year? It's not me.
No, and there's books right over there.
Betty.
It's me.
I can't remember. You're in, no, you're in your second year of your three-year term.
Yeah.
Joe and I, I think you're on the same cycle.
And also, you might put on the airwaves a vote for all tuners?
Sure.
I keep nagging people.
I do, too, and they keep getting elected state rep or something like that.
But send them first to the zoning board and then if they don't sign up for that, they can.
What's the protocol for changing that sign over there?
Something else to.
We'll have to check.
Or guess just more enough.
Where are the letters?
We'll find out.
I'm assuming.
We'll check up on it.
Maybe in the garage.
No. Oh, I don't know. Or she.
I don't know where the letters are.
House writer and Joe McCaffrey.
We'll definitely saw her change it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, since Hal, you're not.
No, you're good for till twenty-twenty, like.
Oh, oh, no.
So, it's who? Joe?
Joe and Hal are up for, their planning board terms.
Right. We'll have to wait and see what happens there.
One of them might, we might lose anyway.
Yeah.
Has he said anything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Who's that?
Wasn't sure. Hal's running for select board. Keep in mind that we have an election of five or three select board seats this year.
Hmm, yeah, we're close.
Yeah, if we're moving from three to five. Figure what? We're moving from three select, select people to five.
Are any seats up for grabs as well or is it just?
Yes, one that includes.
So, okay, so that would be.
Um, who's up?
DJ.
Potentially three new people.
DJ's up.
DJ's up this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Scott's not up yet.
Scott's not up yet. Next year.
That's not up.
Easy year after.
Yeah. So, I know Hal's running, Rick Wolf, Jim Hadley, I think. Those are the words that have been, names that have been discussed.
Matt Frye.
Okay, so there's.
There's four running, there's four that I'm aware of that have stated they're running for a three position.
Just thinking though that, well, Hal's, Hal's up, term is up anyway, so.
Right.
Uh, okay. But yeah, I've been trying to think of alternates or people to potentially come up as alternates as well. And I'm drawing a blank where they get themselves into other commitments. That's okay. Anything else?
I have nothing else. Other than.
Well, I do actually have one.
Everyone has a wonderful holiday season.
Yeah, I was gonna say, please convey to James our congratulations.
Hmm.
Definitely. Wish him a happy holiday season.
You have his baby?
Did.
No, his boys did. Monday.
Tell him I'm disappointed. He, she waited a day late.
Boy or girl?
She was only a day late?
No, she's a week late.
First ones are always so slow.
I was hoping she would deliver on.
What was the date on Monday?
She did. It's okay.
Yeah, Berman was supposed to be on his.
Can't blame, can't blame her for that. So, uh, that, yes, that have a wonderful holiday season. Since we'll see you shortly thereafter.
Yes. We'll be here on the twenty-seventh.
To discuss what's on that DACA.
Mm-hmm. DACA.
We have anything else?
Uh, preliminary consultation and subdivision.
Yeah, the subdivision. That's right.
You're trying to forget, aren't you?
Okay. Don't have to sleep on Christmas.
My understanding was that DACA might just request to be continued at that time? James didn't think that they were gonna have everything.
Oh, I didn't hear that, but.
I might be mistaken.
Well, based on the fact that I haven't heard back from emails, that could very well be that they're just very busy right now.
I know, I think that Mr. Holden mentioned that they would have some difficulties with the meeting. Or me, getting information in time for the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, he wasn't sure. Yeah, I think that's a good assumption, yeah.
Could be quite reasonable assumption, which is fine. In the subdivision, we have about two weeks now, so, okay. Sounds good. I understand. One final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Can I, need any discussion? Good, cause I wasn't gonna give you any.